Good morning, everyone. It's eight fifteen and let's stand for a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda confirmation.
Mr. Chair, modification to the consent agenda, an add of a temporary day sale, on-sale liquor license for Buckmill Brewing.
Okay.
As well as a couple of other modifications. Under County Administrator, Dr. Strand is unable to attend today due to a work emergency. So she won't be here. She'll come at a later time, hopefully in September. And one last modification, under land use, environmental services, just really the title change. There won't be any call or recommendation for any action from the board, but more so just an update on where that's at.
Okay. Just the update.
Mr. Chair, what was the first one? You're just adding a liquor license approval?
Yes, you should have it in front of you.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just...
To the consent.
I would feel more comfortable when we add it to regular agenda.
Okay, yeah, I wondered about that.
Consent agenda. I mean, when you're adding something, I think it should be...
Talk about...
I mean, this is nothing, but I think our habit should be, if you're going to add something, it should be under regular agenda, in my opinion.
Add it under you?
Sure, yeah, you can just add it under me.
Not on here, so, okay. Anything else?
No.
With that, the motion approved with the additions?
So moved.
Motion by Erica.
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Minutes of August sixth meeting, any corrections, additions?
I want to go before Dave. I just had one, the, under open forum where I talked about the request of board agenda item to discuss CAFOs, it should say C-A-F-O-S instead of K-F-O.
CAFOs.
Yep, and then, under the Brian McDonald's, I'm just wondering if we should mention, wasn't there some extra funding or grant funding that was going to pay for that office? I'm just wondering if...
Yeah, there was, up to ten thousand.
Yeah, I just wonder if we should include that in the minutes, just that that was being funded by grant or extra, extra funding from the state or whatever that was. That's all I had, Dave.
Okay. Sweet. Barry, you have anything?
Page two of five, under assessor, probably include the motion, the number of the parcel that was abated. And then, under, on page four of five, motion to concur with planning zoning on the one bullet point where it stipulates no employees, should we just stipulate other than the owners? No, I mean...
No, yeah.
It kind of have some employees if you're going to have a business, so, no, how do you, would you word that?
Yeah.
No outside, or employees, the only employee is the applicant?
Yeah.
No additional employees?
The applicant.
Other than the applicant?
Yeah, no employees other than the applicant, probably. That would probably be worded best. Okay?
I didn't have anything.
What?
Well, I had a couple of you guys.
Oh.
No other ones?
Nope.
The ones I had are addressed. Motion to approve is...
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the changes.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Barry. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carry it. The consent agenda, anything we want to pull or for further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of consent or make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Erica, second by Dave. Further discussion?
Oh.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carry it, thanks. Okay, we'll move the temporary list under you, okay?
Yes.
Commissioners, open forum. I think we have quite a few this morning, which is good. I have to watch your time, we'll limit it to three, four minutes. And then I'll ask you to conclude. First one is John Colley.
Chally. Chally.
Chally, I'm sorry.
You good on the mic?
Okay, good on the mic, thank you. If it's all right, I'll speak to Barry because he heard the, some of my problems.
Please state your name and address.
It's John Chally, and I have a cabin on Upper Cormet, 14742.
Thank you.
I've been working with the zoning department for a number of years now. I have a neighbor who has some problems and we were trying to get them resolved, and I'm being told over and over again that they've sent their three letters and now they've turned it over to the county attorney. Nothing happened, it's been probably five years now. I finally went up to the county attorneys and asked, and they have, they have no record of anything being turned over from zoning. So my question is, how can we fix this so it doesn't happen to anyone else? Is there any way that we could notify people that something is in progress? Doesn't mean you have to send me a letter, but if we go up to the office and we ask, you know, where do we stand on this? Do we have some kind of a track record where we can follow where this complaint is? I have a frustration, I just don't know where to go anymore. They, they tell me, go to the sheriff, no, go to the DNR. They say, go to the county, go to the township. And, and I can't get any answers, but the county attorney now is the last place I went to, and they said, they have no record of it.
Good morning, John.
Yes.
I think to, to update the board a little bit about some of your, some of your concerns, John's been here a couple times in the past and spoke. Where it currently is, I think, the Cormet Watership or the Cormet Township, and I think we had this conversation, gave the, your neighbor a permit to remove the one building that was, that you're in question of. So that, so they gave him a permit for some encroachment on the property, on the township line, but they, one of the conditions was he removed that building. So with that being done, all complaints then were, I mean, they, they quit going to the county attorney, or they're not at the county attorney because this is supposed to take care of the, the issue that, they were in, one of the issues they were in violation of, so I, I think we had that conversation.
Yes, but they have no record of it for the last five years that they went back of anything ever going to the county attorney, and it should have gone to the county attorney several years ago. And when I was going back to the zoning offices, they keep telling me it's been sent to the county attorney. So what happened? Did we throw it away because we didn't have time? Did, did it just get lost in the shuffle?
I think that's probably a question for the board to consider for its own policy, is how do we want to be notified of, of planning zoning, you know, maybe more knowledge for us so we have a better, so, I don't think it should be public knowledge probably, but I think the board could be more aware of it, and so we could maybe address those issues for you a little bit quicker, but maybe, maybe that's something we look into, how we, you know, if we are going to the next level, maybe have the board informed of, of that, just so we, so we would have the knowledge so we can speak better on that part.
Okay, because after all of the advice I've had, the, the last one was, you have a bad neighbor, just learn to live with him. Or go to the sheriff, and the sheriff says, no, we don't do anything with that, that, go to an attorney and have him take care of it. I don't think I really want to go through the attorney route, that's a, a long process. But somehow or other, in this several years, someone should have been able to tell me it has to be sent, or they have to send it to the county attorney again because there's no action being done. For several years, I was told it was being done, but it didn't happen. Okay, now we've kicked this up to the township level, and when you go to the township, they say they have no power to enforce, and they kick it back to you. So what happens between the township and the county as far as enforcing anything?
I don't know, I guess...
Where do I go?
Something that probably Kerry can follow up on a little bit?
Yeah, I, I think probably the best is I have a lot of questions that I need to ask, and so if we have your contact information, I will ask some questions and then I will get back to you.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, no.
Mr. Schramm.
Jerry Schramm, Erie Township. I'm speaking about the Horse Ranch bailout. Horse property is beat-up real estate. I have three horses places near me, and I've had as many as six. They bring flies, an invasive species. Ever heard that term before? The, the place has, this place has been for sale for over ten years, no takers, undesirable. This is a money pit requiring extensive removal of noxious weeds, replanning of desirable foliage. Please forget this expensive boondoggle. Our garbage man, Scoog, has sounded like a snake oil salesman pushing his agenda, building a kingdom. Let the garbage man become efficient at his occupation, freeing up Mitch to work his forest lands and our horrible forest trails. Just say no. Thank you.
Clark Lee.
My name is Clark Lee, I live on the east side of Big Toad Lake, 20552, 2117, and I'm here to talk about the Toad Lake project. And what started out to be a wilderness camping site has now grown, as you can see what was handed out at the public meetings, two, three parking areas, four hundred and five cars, fifty-five campsites, two restrooms with showers, one restroom without a shower, two picnic shelters, one picnic area, one play area, and interestingly enough, in none of the public meetings until the people brought it up, Erica, you were at quite a few of them, and John, you were at quite a few of them, until the people brought it up, there was absolutely no mention by Steve Scoog of funding. There was no mention of the master plan cost, it was misquoted many times, there was no mention of the bridge loan at eight percent interest that could go on beyond the first ten months, it's assumed that all the grants would come in, which they won't, look at crazy. There was no mention of cost to create or open the area, other than the fact that Commissioner Okerson said that the county may have some money and that would be appreciated, but the fact of the matter is that road would have to be totally rebuilt. And there was no mention of, one of the most important things is the annual operation cost. And this is just ridiculous that this thing goes on and on. At the public meetings that I was at, there was one person at the Wolf Lake meeting that might be in support of this, everybody else was opposed. Toad Lake Township supervisors have met twice, they are unanimously opposed to this, and so I would ask the Jewish County Commissioners this morning, when you, you have this on your agenda at nine thirty, kill it. Commissioner Barburg, Commissioner Jepson, and Commissioner Nelson, of all three publicly stated that if the township doesn't support it, they will not support it, so I ask you to not support it, it's ridiculous, from so many aspects. Thank you, any questions?
Thanks, Hart.
Thanks, Clark.
Thanks, sir.
Dave Knopf.
Dave Knopf, 12649, 28th Avenue, Toad Lakes, Lakeview Township. I'm also here to speak about the agenda item, Toad Mountain, and maybe I'm being unrealistic, but I believe, I want to let you know that I'm against the project, I believe it's not, like I say, realistic. And money that seems to be allocated for this is grant money, well, grant money is tax money. Legacy fund came up with that eighth of percent years ago, and I'm assuming that's where this money all comes into the pot from. But it seems like the price of the land that they're offering is such a high, I mean, I just did small numbers, just ten thousand acres, somewhere close to that. It just seems like it's a high price around, and I too, not knowing who would be speaking ahead or behind or whatever, but I didn't, it seems like you need a better financial plan and a long-term range plan of how this would be financially taxed, you know, even not tax neutral. And it seems to be awful expensive to me, you know, to buy a piece of land that's quote unquote bigger than some of our state parks and manage it. Think about the people that are going to have to be hired just to manage those, it's a, it's quite an undertaking size. And if it was really feasible, like you say, and I didn't realize it's been for sale for ten years or whatever, but if it's really, if it's a good business and camping would do well out there, you would think private business, investors could buy that and make it feasible, but I don't know if that's possible, it don't seem to be. And I like to think of, to be a strong, we talk about government, the size of government, figure government buying property, and that, if a local government, we should be, we should stand fast and not, just because this money seems to be available to us, it's not, it, we have to, if we want to stop our federal government overspending, maybe we need to start that when we say local at a county level, not just because the money's available, think we should take the land. Back in the seventeen hundreds when the United States was formed, people came to this country, as I understand, because they didn't want land to be bought, they wanted government to stay out of land. People own land and you have a stronger country, and I feel that's what we need to start doing at the county level. So I just feel that I'm total against it, that's kind of some of my reasons for it. So, thank you, any questions?
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Doug.
Hi, I'm Douglas Sage, I live on Toad Lake, I have Bambi Resort. Now, I, y'all know I'm against it, if you haven't heard. You know, there's a lot of things that, that I think have been done wrong, you know, to me, the, the county protocol hasn't even been followed correctly, it's, it's, there's a lot of reasons. But my, one of my biggest reasons is, who's looking out for the taxpayers? This proposal doesn't say anything about what it's going to cost long-term. And, and, you know, to spend money on a project that is a forever thing, I mean, once you take this grant money, it's forever. And I, I think you guys have a building that you're not using anymore that's grant money that you got to, but pay off the grant, you know, or pay back the grant? Is that not true? I, it's what a rumor I heard, anyway, you know, but to go ahead and figure it out as you go, there's, there's no way to do a plan. I mean, that's, that's ludicrous in my eyes. You know, the project seems to be trying to find a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. I mean, we have parks, we have, you know, one of the statements that was made by Scoog himself is, we don't want to double up on stuff. But you got, you got Detroit Mountain right here, you know, ten, twelve miles down the road, which offers a lot of the same stuff that, that is proposed in this thing, you know? And in their big circle on their, on their map, their thirty-mile radius is the new park they're building on, on Deep Lake over in Park Rapids. I mean, we need another regional park? That, you know, that, that's the kind of stuff that, that to me just doesn't, doesn't fly, doesn't make sense. You know, the other question that I've asked and never gotten an answer to, I've asked it twice, is, is how much county resources have been spent so far on pushing this project? And I mean pushing it, this is, I mean, with the fires and the county employees working and all this stuff on this, you know, how much has, has it already cost? And I never get an answer. Can I get an answer? I'd like an answer. Anyway, that's all the time I'll take today, thank you very much.
Thanks, Doug.
Thanks, Doug. Gary Cousin?
Hello, Mr. Chairman and Board Members, my name is Gary Cousin, and I live at 1231 Madison Avenue, here in Detroit Lakes. I'd like to talk to you about something that is, seems to be a lot more prevalent than I'd care to admit. And what I'm going to talk a little bit about today is what I learned at the Santa Rosa Junior College in Padilla, California, by Reverend Leonard in the summer term in nineteen ninety-seven. Where he would start the class, you do not have any rights that you think the founding fathers gave you. And so, that was in nineteen ninety-seven, in two thousand nine, Nancy Pelosi made her law throw away your right to peacefully assemble and petition the government for ring dress grievances. At the same time, she also declared that that was the true intent of the founding fathers. Now, there's two questions to that question. One, if that's the true intent of the founding fathers, then how did we get the first twelve amendments? To the Constitution, that were all ratified under the founding fathers. And the true intent says that the founding fathers never intended on having any rights. So I'd like to ask you a couple of questions. How many of you have actually read the Constitution? Or is your knowledge on the Constitution based on what somebody else has told you? Under this democracy that's been taught in their schools, I'd like it mandated because it's a mandate from the Minnesota Department of Education, I'd like this county to mandate the schools of Mecca County what that means, which is African-Americans do not have the right to vote. Women do not have the right to vote. Eighteen to twenty-year-olds do not have the right to vote. And just so that you know, our written Constitution is God's gift to mankind. If you're not following the fake democracy Constitution, you can, but you're also following sin's gift to mankind. And I've got another question. In, let's say, two to five years, your kids had that opportunity, but by that time, Congress will pass laws saying these very same things I'm telling you. And you're going to come to me and say, why didn't you do something when you had a chance? So I'd like you to ask yourselves, what are you going to tell them if you don't sign, vote and sign this? In closing, I'd like to say three things. There are consequences to decisions, and you don't like the consequences if you don't ask this for Mecca County. Okay? Second thing, can anybody show me the written Constitution that says that we're a democracy? Because one of the consequences of that is to, to replace a written national historical document with a fake document is white-collar crime. And third, I'd like to ask all of you to vote for this, thank you.
Thank you. Bob Bachman.
Good morning, my name is Bob Bachman, I live at 31747 Sugar Creek Road. I have owned property in this county for approximately forty years, and have lived here full-time for the last ten years at that address, with my wife and occasionally with my children and grandchildren. I consider myself blessed to live in this county, and am very concerned about our water quality and our land use. I am a member of the Isaac Walton League's Prairie Woods chapter, you have, in your packet, you have been given previously a copy of the report we prepared on wake boats. I encourage you to please read that, I know you get lots of documents and have to make lots of decisions, we think this is an important document, we please ask you to, to, to read that. We want to be clear, we are not opposed to the ownership of wake boats. I own an ATV as an example, but there are regulations as to where and how I can drive that. And currently, the wake boats do not have enough regulations, and as a result, we are being subjected to very unpleasant circumstances. We have observed carefully research that has been done across, actually, the entire United States. The University of Minnesota hydrology lab has done much of this research, their research has indicated that operating these boats in wake mode means that up to twenty feet below the surface, there is disturbance that can take place. Yesterday, as an example, I went down to my shoreline and I found plants with the roots still attached on the surface. That tells me that something is tearing up these plants, and when wake boats operate in the wake mode, they are designed to push through the water, not to plane out as your fishing boat or a ski boat may do. This is highly disturbing to the aquatic environment, our shorelines, our docks, our boat lifts, and so forth. We provide a lot of detail in that report, if you have an opportunity to read it again, I encourage you to do so. The operation of these boats has proven to be very divisive... The operation of these boats has proven to be very divisive, both in our local community as well as nationally. And we need better regulations as far as their operation. The counties are capable of, and are legal in Minnesota, to develop ordinances for the operations of these boats that can be done, and we highlight that information in the report. I want to thank you all for the time this morning, and if you have any questions, I'll try and address them either now or at a later time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Willis.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Willis Mattson, 42516 State Highway 34, Osage in Shalit Township. I'm a member of the Isaac Walton League as well, and lead members here in Detroit Lakes and all across the country are pleased to have contributed two professional products of value to the county's comprehensive planning process for your charge. A report today on wake boats and a report on factory farms two weeks ago. Had the county hired a consultant to prepare these reports, the cost would have been around fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars each. By comparison, the Minda Shadtree removal study on Highway 34 is costing nearly one hundred thousand dollars taxpayer money. And the proposed master plan for Toad Mountain is over sixty thousand dollars. It's clear to the lead members from the outset that neither the county's zoning staff nor the planning consultant would have the time or resources to research the single most important issue that triggered the comprehensive plan update, a very large swimming facility that required a conditional use permit, a permit that the county's zoning administrators were not well equipped to handle. So during the moratorium, our lead members, some from many other states and many of whom are highly capable professional scientists, now retired from long careers in natural resource management, stepped up to fill this information gap. But objective, science-based reports, informative as they may be, can be problematic for some policymakers. Reports done well and without political interference can often give us answers to questions we didn't ask and provide inconvenient facts we would rather not know. Our reports document factually that factory farms and wake boats represent two threats to the county's water, its community's cohesiveness, and long-term economic well-being. Our reports show that these activities can introduce significant potential harms to the lake region's surface and groundwater, and that existing ordinances were not designed to address and point out that changes needed can be made. Each factory farm that has feedlots and gigantic six-hundred horsepower watercraft called wake boats each have their own unique but potent potential to pollute water, diminish property values, destroy lake and stream habitat, and turn tourists and would-be lake homeowners away. Private well owners in other states have faced silent threats to vulnerable aquifers supplying their well water and to their families' health from large quantities of improperly disposed industrial-style livestock and poultry waste. And lake homeowners' children in Wisconsin have actually been terrorized by the silent, tsunami-sized waves from wake boats striking docks and beachfront playground equipment. We actually have videos that we'd like to show you demonstrating that types of harm being done. So we understand if you're reluctant to delve deeper into these reports here or at this or at a future meeting, our reports can and will dispel much of the conventional thinking and beliefs about these activities. So we urge you to accept our offer to present the evidence and what measures the county can take to protect its citizens, its economy, and its resources from these harms at a future meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Willis.
I just wanted to make one clarification also, Willis, of what you said is, in your report, you had mentioned that the reason for us doing the comp plan was because of the feedlot, and that's not my understanding of the reason of us updating the comprehensive plan. My understanding of the reason for updating the comprehensive plan was because it was very outdated. You know, it was twenty years old and by statute, it's recommended to do it. So I just wanted to make sure that I don't know that they necessarily correlate, but...
Thank you. I do agree that it was very much outdated, and that was the second reason from my understanding memory that the whole process was launched. So I think those were at play. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Willis.
Thanks, Willis. Phil, do you want to speak?
No, I thought we were just signing in.
Okay. Larry.
Larry Knutson, 44202, 10th Street, Osage, Minnesota. I don't really have a whole lot to add. There's been enough said about this. I could talk about the opportunities. I'm talking about the Toad Mountain. I could talk about the opportunities that already exist in the area on county tax forfeited land, but all I'm going to say is two things. For one thing, we spend thousands of dollars for an EDA department, economical development, to increase our tax base. What this is doing is trying to shrink our tax base. But overall, it's just a bad idea. It's not conducive to the type of activity that you guys are planning for. They talk now about taking the lakeshore off and just using the mountain. That's even a worse idea in my mind because now you're taking two-hundred-and-some acres of potentially thirty-five-hundred-dollar-an-acre, maybe at the most, property and using it for nothing, actually. We don't need hiking. We don't need biking. We don't need sightseeing in that area. We have, my land is just a few feet less. You go to the east, you get higher elevations. It's just a bad idea.
There you go.
Randy Wirth from the township is here. He's the chairman of the Toad Lake Township. Came in late, didn't get on the open forum. I don't know if he wants to say anything.
I guess I don't know if I have a lot to add other than what's kind of already been said.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Mr. Chairman, question. Will people be able to speak on the Toad Mountain item as it comes up?
Possibly not because it's just an update and we'll see what happens.
Okay, because I reserve on it until that agenda.
Because most of the people already spoke on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could we ask Randy just to confirm that the Toad Lake Supervisors did in fact oppose it, that two different...
Yeah, we know that Erica's updated us, so there's no need for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Reports and correspondence. Go first and make it quick.
I can go first.
Okay.
I just had a couple of meetings. We had a housing subcommittee. We toured all of our, several of our properties, looked at one of our properties that we have in Frazee just to see, you know, what could be done with it. We also looked at the workshop just to get some ideas on what could be done. And we met with the DLHRA just to learn more about some of the housing programs that the city has. Also had a EDA meeting. We are starting conversations on our housing contract and what we should do moving forward with that as that time has come. And we've now been given the increase for the contract, so we're going to begin talks with them about the housing contract. Then, human services, everything we pretty much talked about at human services is on the agenda. Attended the fair, as always, the fair was fun. So those on the fair board, and kudos out to the fair board, it was a great turnout. We did attend the rodeo one night. Weather was not spectacular, but it sounds like they're probably coming back next year, which is good. Hopefully, the weather next year will be better. Otherwise, I attended the demo derby, which was always a good turnout. And then, I've attended several meetings for Toad Mountain, but I'll save that report for when we get to that on the agenda.
Okay, thanks. I got it.
Well, just courthouse, we have, Mr. Briston came in and said of an update needed to modify different things from the sheriff's building to the courthouse and for, so he's looking, going to bring, bringing that to the board eventually. But that was, I was worried it was going to be significant, but it was eleven thousand dollars was the...
The way he was brought it up is like, get ready for this.
There's a lot of concern, you know, there's still hot water from this building going over there, so it's cleaning up a lot of those issues and hopefully it'll solve some of the issues that are happening over there with lack of, but the recirculating pumps need to be added and a lot of that type of discussions. He talked over us a little bit, but it was me anyway.
Yeah, one of the examples too that he gave was like, there's no hot water in the break room, yeah, because of that issue.
Yeah. So, moving forward with that, we went through some budgets, asking them to keep everything looking pretty flat as far as any increases for any of the incidentals. So we were pushing that to remain flat. But the other thing is, we talked about quite a bit at length, and Carrie can help me with this, but how we're funding a couple positions out of the recorders' funds, we're partially funding some of those and that will have to reduce that, draw from that to cover some of those expenses because we will deplete those funds in a few years. So how we move forward with that will be, we'll have to look at in the finance and budgeting time. But part of that draw was to the museum and for the big draw, we pulled out a big chunk of that. But there's good monies coming in still, so that'll just have to be about, you know, figure out where the appropriate funding on for that was. Otherwise, it was mostly budgets and Carrie had some things in her report that will... Otherwise, the fair, went to the fair also, and I had these displayed earlier, but this is what, this is a bag full of ribbons is what it looks like to support your youth livestock auction. These do not come cheaply. I've got a bunch of them in here. If you want to, these come, you go to the youth livestock auction and you purchase a ribbon, and the yellow ribbon was fifteen hundred dollars, this one, a couple of years ago. Other ones are cheaper and thank you, Erica bought a nice ribbon this year for a few hundred dollars. So that's how we support our local 4-H and our fair. Go out and keep these kids coming because if you don't have the kids coming to the fair showing their animals, it's not much of a fair, in my opinion. That is what the fair is about, is the kids showing animals and projects and just continue showing that support for them in the future, so.
I just wanted to add to that, this is my second year attending the livestock market auction, and it's quickly becoming one of my favorite events because it's very nice to see the businesses and the public, the grandmas, the grandpas, and the relatives out there supporting all the youth, so.
And they're well deserved, and those kids are the leaders today that, you know, there was, I bought one, he was a ringleader. David Brown was in the ring helping, and I think I purchased a few other people around there helping, and it's a good feeling. You want to, you always want to spend more when you're there, that's for sure, just like any auction, you get over. I bid my second ribbon this year, I was not intending to purchase, and I was trying to bid someone up, and I got stuck with a six-hundred-dollar lamb, so. And of course, you don't get the lamb, you just get the ribbon, so.
I just wanted to add one thing to the fair. The fair board will be coming here, not the whole board, but representatives will be coming here in the next couple of board meeting or two to give us an update on how things went and what they're doing and so forth like that. Once they get everything finalized. Once they get everything finalized, yeah.
And I think there was a little pickup in the senior day. We, I think it was scheduled for a certain time and it went early. The musician on the stage wanted to get, had, there was a conflict, so we had a lot of stragglers to serve pie and ice cream. And we did so with loving hands and just we wish we could have taken that pie in a one instance anyway, and, no, I'm just kidding. Commissioner Knutson was a little late, but we got him served, so, so, thank you.
Yeah, so we've got the fair board pretty good, courthouse pretty good. John and I had a rack committee meeting. There's just a couple, couple quick updates. Dunlop Shelter, the bids are closing like twenty-third and should be, should be starting breaking ground in early fall. And then also too, they're doing a study to move the bike path around the shelter now, so they're going to have to do some testing to make sure where they can put it and stuff. But other than that, it seems to be a goal. The shelter should be going up this fall, so it's exciting. Just one real quick thing on the Osage swimming beach, they're going to, DNR has agreed to remove the concrete, and as soon as that's removed, then they're going to come up with a plan. They're going to come up with a plan of what to put, trees, paths, shrubs, bathrooms, et cetera, to make the beach a little better and to stop some of the erosion going into the lake and then those things. Wanting Park, just one interesting fact, they had a counter for just less than two days, and there was one thousand nine hundred and sixty people that went through the park. And they're attributing, Hank Lucky said they're attributing most of that to the troll, visiting the troll, but that's a lot of people walking through there, so. Anything else on Rick?
No.
And then the last meeting I had was Historical Society. Just a couple quick things. They are having a big fundraiser on October 12th. It's a bootlegger ball. So the, if you guys know what bootleggers are during the prohibition era, they had people that bootlegged alcohol. So the theme is bootlegger, and they're going to have a bunch of activities and things that you could do at the bootlegger ball. So obviously, you can dress up as a bootlegger if you want or not. It's just a fun thing that'll do. So if anybody's interested, they are selling tickets at the museum right now, and the next board meeting, I'll have tickets for any of you guys that want them.
I'll buy one. I don't know if I'll go, but I'll buy.
Yeah, so anyway, it should be a fun thing. And then also, that American Adventures exhibit, the Oregon Trail exhibit, is going to be open on September 28th. And there are other things that happen, that's happened at the museum, but that's the main thing, so.
Dave, one thing to add to our courthouse committee. Brent came in and said as of, well, as of last, what's a couple of months ago, you can't purchase fluorescent bulbs, so we're going to have to replace, as we move forward, we have to replace the LEDs. If we did a one-time fix, that would be about forty-five thousand. We suggested to do a slow process where you can take the old bulbs and reuse, because you can't replace, you can't replace the bulbs, so we'll take the old ones and use them in the old fixture, replace a room or an area and then take those and reuse those bulbs till they go out and more of a slow process than... But it is something that a lot of businesses around are going to be caught off guard if they don't start modifying their...
Because January 1st, you cannot purchase those bulbs.
No, I think it's already, I think it's already happened, isn't it?
January 1st.
January 1st, yeah.
That's it, that's good. I'm good, too.
I had human services with Erica, and the only thing I'll say is now, we discussed how much it's going to cost, how much more it costs to die. So for everybody paying more for groceries and gas, that's coming for you too. That's all I have.
Okay. Most of the stuff I attended, the public input meetings on the Toad Mountain, Wolf Lake and DL here, rack committee with Dave, I had an emergency communication board financial meeting with the state, and basically our finance meeting went through some budget items and the thing of the budget, we're going to be updated a little bit, Carrie here, but moving forward on those. Other than that, do you have anything else on the board on reports? Do we have any appointments?
I don't have any.
I don't have any. Then we'll move on to county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item under me is Lori Thompson. I don't know if she's here. Oh, she's in the back. Okay, we were wondering if that was you.
Good morning.
Morning, Lori.
Morning, Lori. How long is your presentation?
I can make it as quick. I just wanted to update you on...
You know, ten, fifteen minutes for a quick update, if that'll work. Thank you.
I don't know. Most of you may or may not be aware, but since about 2015, we've been collaborating on a DWI court with Becker County. It compromises like with two judges. It's the district court judge, a tribal judge, both with CD, mental health, the county attorney's office, the sheriff's department. So we all meet together every other Wednesday and staff and hold hearings regarding participants that have had DWIs, whether it's alcohol or controlled substance-based. And it's been going really well. And I just wanted to share some of the highlights from this past year. So of the participants that we currently have for Becker County... So of the participants that we currently have for Becker County, this past quarter, we served eight individuals, seven men and one was female. Sixty-one total individuals have started the program since two thousand fifteen. Thirty individuals have completed the program since the beginning. Twenty-four have not completed the program. But we do have a fifty-six percent completion rate. Overall, for the Menominee Becker County, we have the grant together with Menominee and Becker, there's a fifty-nine percent completion rate. Nobody's had to spend any time in jail this past quarter, so usually that would be a sanction. So when people are coming into the program in lieu of going to jail or prison, they get to be in this program. And so they have to meet certain qualifications in order to do so. They can't be violent. They have to be a Becker County resident, they have to be at least eighteen. And so they plead guilty and then they come into this program. And our hopes is that we're gonna make some life changes for them and that they won't recidivate because they're getting the services that they need. It takes about an average of twenty-two months to complete the program. Overall, Becker County recidivism, recidivism rate is a sixteen percent. And only three percent of people that have graduated the program have, were charged with a new DWI. And so since, since COVID, we hadn't necessarily had, as far as like some of the cultural pieces for White Earth, but we recently had graduation of one of our enrolled members and we brought in a drum and we had an eagle feather ceremony and some of our former Judge Tormoni was there, Brian McDonald was there. And it was just really nice. It was just a really nice coming together and it was a nice celebration of all the work that that participant had gone through. It's, when you see people at graduations, we always have that opportunity to visit with them, what they thought was successful, what was hard. And always, it's, the amount of work, it's hard work being in this program. You're being tested at a minimum two times per week. And so it's hard. Their, their, their time is monitored, but they find it's the most rewarding and they feel like the program has changed their life and that they're able to, like, they feel like they've been saved because they've gained the skills that they need to be successful in their sobriety. So it's pretty, pretty empowering that way. I also would just wanted to take a few minutes to talk about, this past couple of years, we have coordinated with Becker and Menominee and Clearwater. We have, the tribe has a assistant tribal probation program. And so we work collaboratively with DLC, with Brian Rubenstein and Trish Hansen out of Bemidji on a program where we, I have two assistant tribal probation agents, they've gone through the DLC training and they work hand in hand with the DLC agents, with some of the members that we have on the reservation, trying to help them get the resources that they need. And it's been just a really good collaboration. We meet every other Tuesday and staff cases together. And overall, let's see. Wanted to find, we have about sixty-four clients in there, roughly anywhere between sixty to seventy-five clients. But in February, when we were looking at statistics, thirty-seven clients had been discharged from the assistant tribal probation program. Two had a sentence executed, five returned to prison, twenty-five successfully expired, one relocated and four were successfully reduced in supervision. So when that mattered too, because there's two agents working with them, we are looking again at the higher risk, high needs individuals that need that attention. And so that program has been working out really well for individuals. And so I just wanted to take a moment to highlight you, to you, some of the collaborations that we have that have been going really well and ask, do you guys have any questions at all? No? Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you, Lori, for what you guys do there.
This is a voluntary program, correct? I mean, they have option of different types of sentencing, but it's voluntarily to come
Right, because they're, they're choosing, like for the DWI program, they're choosing to plead guilty, because they could fight it and try to get, get a deal of some sort or get off of it, but, so yeah, they're voluntarily going into the program.
They could, they could get traditional sentencing or come into the program.
Correct.
Usually they'd rather try to work through the program than.
Yeah.
So like if someone pleads guilty and agrees to go in your program, do they still pay all the fines that come with the DWI?
Yep. And they do technically pay a fee to be in the program. So it's like, they're charged like five hundred dollars. They can earn credits. So when they're completion of treatment, they can do a draw out of the bucket and it can be anywhere from five dollars to fifty-dollar fee credit. So if they continue to do well, they attend, they have to attend the victim impact panel, they get a, they get a draw. And so they could, they can just have to pay minimum fees by the time they're done. But the fees that they're charged from doing the crime, they still have to pay for that.
No, I think overall, it's like the one here in DL and Clay County, it's, they're doing great.
Yeah.
It's a great program and wish everyone the best continuing it.
Yeah.
It helps a lot of people.
Yeah, for sure. Well, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to take, we haven't been here for a while, just to update you on how everything's going and it's, it's been going really well and so, and thanks for all the work that you guys do.
Thanks, Lori.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend approval for the temporary day on sale license for the Bucksmill brewing that was placed under my agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the Bucksmill, like, temporary license.
Wish me, Erica, a second?
I'll second that.
My Dave, through the discussion, hearing on all the papers, say aye?
Aye. Is Maple Hills Orchard, is that a?
It's right on Hundred Thirty, it's a orchard that raises apples and a lot of, a lot of other stuff.
A couple of updates. We do have still some outstanding union contracts that are out there. I was really hoping that this, that I'd have those ready for board consideration. They are redlined, they are out with the unions, we're awaiting word whether or not it's, you know, passed on their side. And I'm, I'm very much hoping that we will be able to bring those back and we'll be complete on, on three-year contracts.
Which ones do we have left?
Um, we have all the supervisors ones left. Or, excuse me, three supervisors ones and corrections dispatch.
Okay.
That we're awaiting word on. And I know Amanda and I have just checked late yesterday and we haven't, we haven't received those back. So that is where that is at. Last week I attended the Project Four Twelve pitch at the college and that was really, really a fun event. Got to see the four finalist entrepreneurs locally. And I, I didn't stay long enough to see, to hear who actually won, but I got, I did, I did vote, so. Yeah, it was a lot of fun. It was a really well-attended community event at the college. Budgets, that's already been mentioned, we are hot, are very much into the budget cycle and we, through your committees, you would have probably have seen the majority of the budgets this, thus far. I'm hoping in the next day that we're gonna have our payroll costs in there and then we will then bring it for final and we'll be ready to look at setting the levy or the preliminary levy. With that, I guess more of a question for the board, would you like, I, I know in finance, we did speak about potentially doing a working session, budget session? I just was.
After our next.
Yes, so I was just looking for feedback if, if that's something that you would.
Yeah, I would, I think that would be good.
I would agree, yes.
Okay, so we will, we will schedule that, that then in September, the first, first board meeting for, for a working session. Job descriptions, we've received those, I think I've referenced those before from DDA and they are just being reviewed to make sure that we have right titles. And I know I've pushed out a few of those to a few of the departments and Amanda is helping with that as well. So hopefully, I'm hoping for next board meeting that I will be able to bring recommendations. I know this has been asked by a few of the board members. As we review those job descriptions, they are some of those jobs that potentially could go to exempt status versus hourly. So there are three positions in the county that I will bring forth, hopefully next board meeting for your consideration, to be considered for exempt status versus hourly.
Would you run through those, through their respective committees too?
Yes, yes. Last, let's see here. I think that's all I have for my report. One last thing to report on, yesterday I was able to make an offer to an HR director, so she will start September ninth. So that will be great to have somebody on board.
Nice.
So that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions for Curry? Human Services, Denise.
Good morning.
Good morning, Denise.
I have Lucy Meyer with me this morning, who is our behavioral health supervisor currently and knew about a year and a half, become with us now. So I've been doing a great job. We just have a request coming forward this morning to request a co-supervisor in the behavioral health unit due to the need. And based on supervisor workload and operational effectiveness. And the funding would come from a grant, increased revenue as a result of the higher and also decreased expenses. So we expect that it would be fully funded. We've, we've taken it through the Human Services Committee and both commissioners are on board and as well the Finance Committee yesterday, so.
So you're looking at me? I, I do have questions. I, what, this grant is what? For what was it, fifty-five was it?
Forty-five.
How long is that grant for?
It's, it's not, it hasn't ended. That's, it's actually the crisis grant.
Continual?
Yep, it's a continual, year after year.
And I, and I noticed.
I should mention that the year-over-year cost of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, that's the worst-case scenario. That's the step ten of the new class and comp scale, just so you're aware of that too.
I would like to see a little bit more. My question is this, if you have a new, new employee that takes over some of the roles, so some of those, I know those costs are reimbursed, but are those taking away from, I mean, we're getting those already and we're just, because we're working too much? Or how is, I mean?
Yeah, so she can vouch as a, since she's been on, she's reported working fifty to sixty hours a week, trying to get everything done with the increased difficulty in cases, but also grants and the reporting and the additional work that's been involved in the last few years.
Have you looked into, I mean, is it a full-time position that you, they're needing? Or is it something that you could have a half-time position or an assistant, you know, to do that type of work?
We've determined that a full-time, based on the need currently, but the number of things that we could add on as far as additional programs, searching out for additional grant opportunities that Lucy just does not have the time to do.
Grant opportunities for other, other areas then?
Correct, yep. And, yeah, just a number of things. I don't know if you have anything to add, Lucy, that I haven't mentioned?
No, definitely, there's oftentimes other grant opportunities that take, you know, an application process and then managing of the grant. And at this point, you know, working fifty to sixty hours a week, that's just trying to stay above on the things that I've already got going on. And so, you know, there's definitely things that could be done better. Like I said, often it's just a matter of staying afloat. But, you know, I, I feel like there are opportunities to access other revenues. Just unfortunately, I just, I just don't have the time to be, to be writing for grants or, or what have you, starting new programs, you know? And I also feel like there are a lot of things within here in Becker County that, you know, we could be looking at doing, like trying to bring in more services for our, our clients here. But that would, that would, you know, need for developing relationships. I don't have time for that, you know? We could be partnering with other counties or regions to bring in some of the, the resources that they have, but again, that's developing relationships, but I just.
Can you give an example of something?
An ACT team would be fantastic to have here in Becker County.
And the acronym is, stands for?
It is, basically it's an adult mental health team that would help people be successful within the community, providing intensive support around their mental health and any of their challenges that they have.
And those, those are reimbursable then by the state?
So those would be opportunities that we could fund through grants. Those are things that we would not necessarily provide as an, as a county, but it would be services that would be available for our clients on the county, county case loads.
And I, I just want to add that we wanted to focus on prevention rather than waiting till they're in crisis and then finding housing and residency and group homes and, you know, treatments and things like that. We wanted to try to focus on prevention, but with, as it is now, we're not able to do so.
And avoiding, like, when we have individuals stuck in facilities that does not meet criteria, where once they meet does not criteria in a facility, then it's up to the county to pay those daily rates until another setting can be found. It's really important to stay on those does not might meet criteria clients because those can cost us twenty-two hundred dollars a day, pretty expensive setting.
So are we paying any of those currently?
We have, yes.
So, so it's, it's, are you, are you saying that the cover, the cost of this is going to be from savings or, or more income?
Savings, closer, closer to staying on top of those things with a supervisor right now. I think we could be doing more, you know, ensuring that case managers are starting to look for other placement options from the time that they enter one of those settings. They do a pretty good job, but again, that requires supervision and making sure that you're checking in with them and that, that is staying a priority for them. Obviously, case managers are very busy too. And so ensuring that, you know, their focus is staying on what's really gonna cost the county money and then ultimately, you know, needing to find those longer, longer-term placements for individuals for their own mental health, you know, being, you know, being sent from place to place to place because their temporary settings isn't good for anybody, much less somebody who's suffering from a mental health challenge.
We did talk to, you know, previously, when this was first brought to the Human Services Committee, about whether or not to, to look at an, an additional case manager or supervisor and which would, would make more sense. And one of the things that they said was, the caseload size at this point is manageable, but the issue is, is having the supervision to help the, the clients work through the cases to, to provide them appropriate services. And I think we, we know and there's been much talk of it, that the mental health needs have, have drastically increased, not just in Becker County, but throughout the whole state of Minnesota. So I think one of the things that would be important to do is to, to advocate to get local services so that we can provide, have, have more mental health services for our residents in Becker County, because right now we do, that is lacking. And, and as, as Lucy said, it's building those relationships, seeking out grants, seeking out programs that can, can hopefully bring services to Becker County that will prevent placements. Placements are expensive. There's very little reimbursement for, and I'm talking from the children's world, because that's, that's what I know, I don't know the adult world. But any, anytime you have to, to place a child in residential care, it's almost always one hundred percent out of pocket unless it's a QRTP placement, a qualified residential treatment placement. And with that is a whole lot of additional paperwork and, and time on worker and, and requires additional supervision. So an additional case manager isn't probably going to, to help and it's gonna have another person for Lucy to supervise. So that was just one of the things that we, we had discussed in our Human Services Committee.
Yeah.
If we could just add about funding, I'm not sure we quite answered your question fully. We have the forty-five thousand dollars currently for two thousand twenty-five and ongoing, so that's already, we already have that, that funding, a grant funding. But we also. But we also will expect an increase in revenue due to the additional work that the, the additional supervisor will help with and reduced cost. One placement, for example, if we can avoid one placement, could pay for, you know, that portion of the position that we don't.
But it's not new funding then? It's our, it's current funding?
So the $45,000 actually will be new funding starting 2025 in the mobile crisis. Right now, we have $40,000 dilated for one of our case managers who does coordination of the mobile crisis grant. However, her role has taken on a smaller role. And so we have identified $65,000 that will be reimbursable through the mobile crisis grant. 20 of that will be towards her role and then 45 will be towards my role as the supervisor who oversees that, that grant. So that $45,000 does look different for '25 moving forward.
Right, so it's a grant that we have currently, but we've just switched the focus a little bit to add that $45,000 beginning next year. If that makes better sense.
Well, the concern I have is adding a position in the, without it being budgeted for and knowing that, knowing for sure that that, those reimbursements would cover that is a little, is a little questionable for me.
The only problem is that, that this, this is a problem nationwide. It's growing. It's growing faster than a lot of things. And so I don't like it either Barry, but, you know, if, if they're overwhelmed and they're, because that's where it's at now and they're not being able to serve the ones they have, then, and, then our money is being, is being wasted if we can't, if we can't keep people out of these institutions. If we can keep them out and, and it is a problem. Suicide rates are at record levels, anxiety, drug use. It's just all exploding all over the country. And those are just facts. I didn't make this up. That, that's what's going on here. And so.
I think we also mentioned in, in our Human Services meeting that, that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there's additional services that we can be provided around substance use that we haven't been able to explore because it's a new funding, it's a new, new services and programs that as a supervisor, you haven't been able to explore because you don't have the time. So there is additional opportunities for, for that that we just have to figure out. We, we just have to be able to, to find the time as a supervisor to develop that program and to, to do it, which Lucy doesn't have the time to do right now.
Yeah, right now, we've got it set up where we are now able to bill. But it's, it's a process to get into the systems and bill and it's going to be a new process for us. And I've done the training. I've had some of my staff do the training. But again, I mean, it's just, it's going to be time-intensive, especially in the beginning. And I just, I can't get there at this point. I'm already, like I said, working an average of 15 to 20 hours, more than 40 hours a week. And that's just keeping my head above water at this point.
And that's where ultimately I need to be able to keep someone in that position who is able to, you know, have a better balance between their work and home life. And that's ultimately what I'm looking for.
Any other questions, comments? Wishes of the Board on Resolution 2B?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2B.
I'll second.
Motion by Erika, second by Richard. Further discussion? Hearing them, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose?
Aye.
Curry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Lucy, thank you.
Steve.
Morning.
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 Word Steve, word Mitch.
Word members. Barry, Peggy. In the past, we talked about having some public input meetings on the Toad Mountain Project. And so we did. You have an update here I can hand out. Could you give them one of these, too? Oh, yeah.
We've, we've got these.
Mr. Chairman, can we turn the mic rolling up? We can hear them back here.
Okay, can you hear that?
I'm talking in.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we already got that one.
Hold on. We already got that, sir.
We already have that.
You already have this one, yeah.
Just the one with all the income.
Yeah, just the one.
You have some up here? If you want, that's fine.
Extra copies?
Yes, sir. Sure. Sure. Okay, Mr. Chairman. So we had two public input meetings. We had one in Wolf Lake and we had one here in the courthouse. And we heard many concerns. They range from concerns of what properties being, the purchase price of the property, taxation, the effect on, on fire contracts, when will the county board make a decision? Is possible burial sites on the property? There were some questions on the process. And, let's see, I need one of these. If there's some questions. You can read through these. There's people that insinuated that the survey is biased and the county shouldn't do this. You know, philosophically, I think there's some people that just don't want to see this move forward for various reasons. So the first meeting in Wolf Lake, we had good attendance. There was about 20 people, 21 people that signed the signing sheet. And we spent about hour and a half talking about the project, the master planning process, fielding some questions, trying to answer them as best as we could. And we also met in the courthouse. And there was between 20 and 25 people in attendance. A number of the people that attended the one in the courthouse here also attended the one in Wolf Lake, that meeting there. There were some new questions that came up and basically, in my opinion, the tone changed. There's more willingness for some, from some people to take into consideration possibly changing the scope of the project. There's talk about what would happen if you split off the lake shore? What would be the impact of that? And that's something that the current owner was open to possibly talking about and maybe perhaps doing. So also, in those meetings, we talked about future public input. And as a result of that, I've, if this is to continue moving forward, I would ask that the Board postpone making a decision on getting into a contract with SRF for right now. Move that out until the September 15th Board meeting?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, excuse me. To the 17th. And that would give some time for some of these questions to be answered. Also, I would like to have SRS, SRF come up here and, at the next Board meeting and present their proposal and talk about the master planning process, if you'd be open to that? Just, just to get some people so they understand what it is. Many of these questions that I have heard that have came up about the site plan that we had drafted, about what's there, concerns about different types of amenities, most, all those things would be addressed in the master planning process. Basically, you'd be starting from scratch. The whole purpose of that plan that we had out there was just to generate conversation. You know, it's a starting point. So I guess for right now, what I'm looking back is just for some feedback and I'm not sure if you'll open the floor for a discussion or not, Mr. Chairman. As far as this project and the, and the process that we're going through, does the Board have any questions on either the survey? Where we're at? Any, any thoughts?
So I've attended the last, you know, three meetings of, of the Town Board and I attended the, the meeting in Wolf Lake. I think we can, I can say for sure that there is a resounding not support for, for the current plan. At the special meeting, the one thing that, that there did appear to be some support for is, is considering like a nature preserve where, where the mountain would not be developed and we would not have the, the lake shore. I, I can't say for sure if that's going to be supported. You know, I've, I've been pretty vocal that I will only support it if, if the local, the local people support it. One thing, you know, as I've been considering this is thinking about whether, if this would move forward, I would want like a citizen advisory committee, which would include somebody from the Town Board, include people that live there and will be affected by it so that they would have a say. But that's only if, one, it's, it's supported by the locals. Two, this is something that we could get grant funding for. This would have to be of minimal cost to, to the county. I don't want to, to spend taxpayers, you know, a large amount of taxpayer money. And it would, you know, much of the, the feedback that I've gotten is, is the $2.5 million feels like an inflated number. You know, I know we're, we're getting an appraisal, but, you know, that's, that's a hard, a lot of money, a lot of money to spend. So I guess that's, that's, that's my input. I don't, I would be willing to take this back to, I know Randy's here, right? Hi Randy. I know Randy's here. You know, I would be willing to take it back to the, the September Toad Lake Town Board meeting just to get further thoughts. But again, if, if we may come back with the same, the same input in that, you know, it's no. Before we would do that, I would want to get, you know, input, you know, how much would it cost without the, the lake shore? How much, you know, what are the chances of the, the grant money going through? I do know that many of the questions that, that people have, that they want answers for, I understand that, that, that those answers would likely be, or those questions would likely be answered through the master plan. But again, this master plan costs, you know, money. So, so that's, I guess that's where I stand.
Well, I've, I've said this before, I'll say it again. I've talked to a lot of people. I have not found one person that wants it, none. And it is something that we'd get into that we, once we're into it, we can't get out of it. I've heard people talk about our trails that we have now and they are in bad shape. And we are working on them, but there are a lot of things, we could do a lot of things there. And, and if the economy goes or whatever goes and we don't have the money, fine. But once we, once we start this project, we're, we're into it. And I don't want to compete with local business. It's hard enough being in business the way it is.
Well, and I think, I think, Richard, that's one thing that was very clear through this process is, you know, there, there's no support, local support for sure, for any kind of RV park or, or camping because we don't want it, we don't want to compete with, with the locals. Again, what does that have to do? Or how, how will that affect potential grants? You know, and if that's, if that's what's going to be a requirement, then, you know, that's what we would have to consider. But I agree, I don't, I don't think we should be competing with local businesses.
Comments or wishes of the Board?
I understand this is just an update today.
This is an update.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of concerns over it and if the township is opposed, it's, it's going to be a tough sell. I think we need to look at, you know, the, the things that have been, through the survey, tell us that people are in favor of more amenities on land. And if we can't do it at Toad Mountain, maybe we find other areas that we can improve land that we do already operate. So, I mean, I think it's, I think it's, I think this is an update. I don't think the update is, today we act on it, but if we did, I don't know, I don't think it would have the best outcome for moving forward. But again, I think, I don't, I don't know if we need to hear the planner. I think, 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 they've expended their time and energy already and I certainly don't want them to add more to their, put more work on them if we're not moving forward. So I think, I think this Board at some point has to make a decision and, and decide, I don't want them to, I don't want other people to have to put work into something if it's, if it's already decided. And I don't know if it is, but today was just an update, so I'm not going to say anymore.
Consensus? Bring it back on the September 17th meeting?
Seventeenth.
Yeah, and I, I agree with Barry. I don't know that we need the consultant to come in, at the Board meeting, I think.
I, I do want to point out, if this doesn't go forward to a park or the county purchasing it, that I believe this is a commercial property. This is owned commercial. So they have a lot of, just, just be careful what you wish for sometimes.
And that, and that was among, you know, through the conversations that I have, have had with people, that is one of the, you know, that there are people that are not against it, but also don't want it to be developed. So that's one of the reasons why, why I, I would consider, you know, taking this back and looking at that to hear those voices of people that want something, but don't want this. And again, if, if, if we don't have the, the local support, then, you know, it, I won't support it.
The problem with altering it, Danny, without the swim beach, I don't think there's anything there that, I mean, besides the, the view, I don't think it's something to pursue forward without the swimming area. I don't think we need to look at that, in my opinion. Because that's one of the biggest assets of that property.
I think it's, I think it's one of the biggest assets, but it's also, we'd be purchasing cabins that I don't feel like we have use for. And I know not everybody probably agrees with me, but that, that's my biggest issue with the, the beach side is we have the cabins that are going to cost the money for maintenance. And I'm, I don't, I don't, my vision of what it could be doesn't include the, the cabins. So I'm not sure what benefit they would be for us to essentially purchase them.
The other, the other kicker, and I think John and I have alluded to it prior, is the Frazee Swim Beach, which the city used to own. And they're in the process of closing, closing that out. And I think.
The Frazee City or the Eagle Lake?
The Eagle, Frazee. The Frazee City owned it though.
Yep, yep.
And I, and I think that is, I think we need to protect that swim beach, which is an existing swim beach. And I don't know, I, I assume most people would agree with that in this room. It's been an existing swim area. And the city chose to sell it to a, a group. I think that group has reached out to John and I, I know, and expressed that they would like to at least keep the swim beach public and ask the county assistance. So that's another, and I, I think that is, that takes precedent, in my opinion, over the Toad Mountain Beach.
Add to that, that's the only public access for anybody to put a boat into their place on Eagle Lake.
On Eagle Lake.
So.
So there's other.
Critical, so.
So with that, I, I don't have any.
With that, we'll bring it back on the 17th.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks Steve, thanks Mitch.
Thanks Steve, thanks Mitch.
Sheriff Blinder.
Mr. Chairman? Do you have any comments?
No, I said that earlier, it's just an update.
It's good to have all you people here, I hope you can stick around, we have the swearing in of some officers, give them your support, would be great.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Morning.
Morning Todd.
We have two items. The first one is sheriff's office construction planning update, and in your packet, there were two additional service agreements provided by Clan McCarthy, and we've just been discussing the feasibility of what it would look like adding the sheriff's office space out at our jail site. And the two agreements, one with McGuff, which we've used in the past, that is a $2,000 charge, and another is professional project management for $4,250. So again, just basically, these are cost, to add cost estimating services and coordination review by Clan McCarthy to provide an estimate of probable cause for law enforcement feasibility study and scope of work.
Can we, I would like to run this through committee a little bit more thoroughly, if we could.
That's fine.
I'd like the motion to table.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Barry to the table, back to committee.
Yep.
And seconded by Dave.
We have committee Thursday.
Thursday.
Yep.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carried.
And item number two, I'd like to introduce our three newest deputies.
You guys say this is going to be a treat.
Delta's trying to sneak up.
Not Delta.
Delta's not the newest deputy.
Yeah, you want to know their faces, so you know what you're getting into. They were gathered out in the lobby, so just a minute.
It's great to see so many people here.
Yeah.
Big group, yeah, great.
Yes.
So the first person I'd like to introduce is our, our new office manager, Brad Mahoney. Brad is originally from Detroit Lakes, but I'll let him talk more about that. We're going to do him first because he has to get out to the jail to do interviews, so. Welcome Brad.
Yeah, Detroit Lakes High School grad, moved, joined the military, traveled around a little bit, ended up in California for 30 years, decided I was trying to come home, so moved back last year. Very grateful to be at the sheriff's office, grateful to be at the sheriff's office, it's great to be on here.
Welcome.
And he's doing an excellent job, Morris. Thanks Brad.
There you go.
You may be released. He wasn't expecting that, so. Now I would like to introduce our newest deputies. I'm going to start with Mike McCombs. Mike was the first one hired of the last three, and I'll let you talk a little bit about yourself.
Mike McCombs, from Champlin, Minnesota, played a lot of sports and stuff growing up, went up to Moorhead to get my bachelor's degree in criminal justice, worked in Moorhead for a little bit before I came here. Coming here, I think, was probably one of the best decisions I've made. It's a very great place to work, grateful to be here.
Welcome.
Great, welcome.
What school, MS?
MSU one.
Hey, go Dragons.
Yeah.
Boo. I was there for a while.
And next we have Leah Horner. Leah is not new to Becker County, she came to us as a corrections officer, and we invited her over on this side, and she's been doing a fine job also. She's still on the training program, and we're happy to have her. Leah, you can give a little background.
I'm Leah, I graduated from Perm High School, and I went to Alec Tech for my law enforcement degree, and like Todd said, I've been at the jail two years prior to me coming over here, and it's probably, I feel like it's one of the better counties to work for, as it's all a community and everyone's-
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you Leah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then last but not least, Blake Olson, he's our newest deputy, came to us from the Breckenridge area. Go ahead Blake, you can give an update.
Like the sheriff said, I'm Blake Olson, I grew up in Moorhead, I grew up coming to Becker County and joining the Lakes Miss County since I was a little kid, if you remember. Ended up getting my criminal justice degree and M State out of Moorhead, went to work for the Clay County Sheriff's Office as a correctional officer, and then proceeded to Breckenridge, where I spent the last seven years working as a police officer. I'm excited to be in Becker County, it was a dream to be here, worked for the sheriff's office since day one, so I look forward to serving the community of Becker County.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to do the Oaf of Service, and they've already done the important one, it'll just be ceremonial, and you guys come up and stand. Have you raised your right hand and repeat after me? Aye?
Aye, Leah Horner.
Do hereby swear.
Do hereby swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And to partially discharge.
To partially discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the Office of Deputy Sheriff.
Of Deputy Sheriff.
Of Becker County, Minnesota.
Of Becker County, Minnesota.
To which I've been duly appointed.
To which I've been duly appointed.
For the best of my ability.
For the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Leah? They're getting their same badges back, so I know how cops are. It only hurts for a little while. I'd like the board to come on.
You ordered this, right? We let that happen.
All right? Good. Thank you very much.
that many at one time.
Yeah.
And kind of getting our staff at full for a long time, so.
Yeah.
With that, anything else?
Nope.
We're done.
I think this is a record.